Welcome this evening. My name is Wayne Losi. I'm the Chairman of the Lin Water and Sewer Commission. And this is a public hearing that we've, we're holding, the Lin Water and Sewer Commission, for the purpose of receiving information from CH 2A Hill Engineers on an update on a supplemental facilities plan that was done recently. And as, because we're doing it this way, it allows the public an opportunity to ask questions and any comments they might have. I would ask that we allow Tony to give his report. And at the end of his presentation, we'll allow people to come up to the podium and ask questions and make comments. And I would ask that you please state your name and address for the record, and also that there's an attendance list on the podium as well when you move up. At this time, I would like to recognize public officials. We have over here Paul Crowley, former city councillor. We have a Water and Sewer Commission member, Walter Prueian. We have Brendan Creighton, state representative in the back. Beside him is Rick Starwood, Lin City School Committee. And a member of the commission and a city councillor, Peter Capano. And we have a Commissioner, William Turhan. We also have in attendance Dan O'Neill, the Executive Director, Bob Tucker, Chief Operating Officer, Dave Travers, Treasurer, and Anthony Marino, the engineer for Lin Water and Sewer. And now, this time, I'm going to turn it over to Tony Omobono, who will give his presentation. And again, at the end of his presentation, we'll open it up to the public for questions and comments. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you, Wayne. Did everybody hear me? If at any time you can't hear me, just let me know. I know it's mic, but we're away from you. So if you can't hear me, just let me know. Good evening, everyone. As Wayne had said, my name is Tony Omobono. I'm with CH 2A Hill Engineers. We are the general engineering services provider for Lin Water and Sewer Commission. So I work very closely with Dan O'Neill and his staff, Anthony Marino. In the way of a little bit of context to tonight's presentation, this is really a tough, this is an overview of the update that was done to the Supplemental Facilities Plan that was prepared to be commissioned back in 2004, submitted to DTP and EPA. It's dated November 17th, only because this is the same presentation that we delivered to the Commissioners on that date. So just by, by way of noting that, again, this presentation was given to the Commissioners in this same presentation you'll see tonight. So in the way of a little context to the discussion, for those of you that aren't aware of the CSO issue in the city, CSO stands for Combined Sewer Overflow. Essentially, the network of sewers, the drains in the city, for the most part, at one time originally, all combined into one pipe. So stormwater and sanitary waste water combined into one pipe and was conveyed to the treatment plant. As a result of dealing with and violating the Clean Water Act, CSOs, combined sewer overflows have to be reduced and/or eliminated back through the 70s, 80s, 90s when the legislation wasn't acted. The Commission has their history with dealing with CSOs dates back in the mid-70s. One of the first facilities plans that was developed to deal with CSOs was done in the late 80s, early 90s. The Commission undertook a series of projects to separate combined sewers in various parts of the city. And then there was one area of the city that predominantly left, and that was the subject of a new facilities plan done in 2000. The plan was developed around a complete separation approach. A consent decree was entered into with the Commission to eliminate CSOs, and the project was undertaken. Around 2003, 2004 timeframe, there were problems identified with that project, and a supplemental plan was requested and submitted to DTP. It's been now 10 years. There really hasn't been a response from DTP and EPA on that supplemental plan. So the Commission undertook an update to the plan to make sure that it represented baseline conditions for current conditions, and looked at the approach that was prepared back in 2004 with the intention of updating it to determine one, that it could in fact work, and if not, come up with an alternative recommended plan. So this presentation tonight is an overview of that updated plan that was presented on behalf of the Commission. And I'll go through the presentation, I'll show you outline in a minute, but then following the presentation, as Wayne had said, you can open it up for discussion with questions. So tonight, we're going to talk about the plan itself, just going through the highlights, what was done to update the hydraulic model that was used, a very important tool in assessing the impacts and the alternatives available to deal with the CSOs. We updated the baseline condition from the 2004 timeframe to now, so that the report could reflect current conditions. There's plan recommendations that were reassessed back from the 2004 plan. We also evaluated a number of new alternatives. So we'll talk about those recommendations, those alternatives, and the related levels of control that we need. Then we'll discuss what we've developed as the recommended plan going forward. We'll review the financial assessment or analysis that was done as a result of implementing that plan, and then we'll open it up for discussion. So relative to the hydraulic model and calibrating the hydraulic model, we've added a lot more detail to the model that was used in the 2004 plan. So we updated the version of software that was used for the modeling, and we actually expanded it to include a lot more detail, more pipes, more manholes, a little fiber geography of the city that was used originally in the 2004 plan. And we also completed a couple of seasons of monitoring, co-monitoring. And that's a situation where we actually put meters that record flow in the pipes at several locations to relative the area. And we use that information to then make sure that our model was reflecting exactly what was happening down in the city. Once that model was calibrated, we used it to project different conditions, what would happen during different types of rainfall events, how many overflows would occur, and then we used that as a tool to determine what our recommendations would be to try to reduce the number of overflows that occur. By way of a little background, just wanted to share some of the conditions that exist of the city today. And this is a table that really shows two different types of timeframes and the rainfall associated with that, and what it does to reduce overflows. So in the left-hand column, it lists the five major CSO outfalls in the city. The middle column includes the number of overflows and the volume that those overflows generate in what's considered an MRA typical year. So an average year's rainfall, MRA is evaluated in a lot of statistical data with regard to what does a typical year look like. So we use their data as an industry accepted standard here in Massachusetts, supported by DTP and EPA. So this is a result of current conditions, what happens during a typical year of rainfall. And just so to give you a point of reference, if we look at CSO 03 in the left-hand column, it looks like, I mean, that number is 16. So the frequency of overflows that occur currently from that outfall are 16 in a typical year, generating approximately 10.6 million gallons of discharge. And you can see it relative to the other outfall locations. Far right column represents a five-year event or a five-year timeframe. Typically, in that five-year timeframe, you'll have more intense rainfall events. So you can see just the difference between a one-year and a five-year. Not a lot of difference in some of the outfalls, but for example, CSO 06, which is the outfall at Kings Beach, under the typical annual rainfall event, you have one CSO typically in a year generating about 10 million, about 100 million gallons of discharge. But in the five-year scenario, that increases to three, and discharge is about five times or a half million gallons of volume of overflow. So this is just to give a highlight of existing conditions, and we did this using that updated hydraulic model. The 2004 plan that was done evaluated a number of different alternatives to try to come up with a recommended plan. And just a little context of the recommended plan, prior to this 2004 plan itself, the supplemental plan, after the project had stopped, the Commission was under order, consent decree if you will, to produce zero discharges at the outfalls at all. So no overflows could occur under that plan that was in place from 2000 to 2004. So this report was done, and it looked at alternatives, but the alternatives considered something less than that zero discharge, meaning we'd get some overflows to occur rather than zero that the consent decree, excuse me, has required. So back to 2004 recommendation for, so alternative 2A was chosen. I'll go into a little bit more detail of what that, that alternative included. So 2, 2A, the recommended alternative, back in 2004, was intended to produce, at CSO 03, a 10-year level control. By 10-year level control, I mean that a CSO discharge wouldn't occur about once in 10 years. So based on the statistics of rainfall that occurs that produces a once-in-10-year storm, you would get no overflows in 03 unless that one-in-10-year storm had occurred. In outfalls 4 and 5, the level of control was three months, so four times a year, you would get a discharge from outfall 4 and 5 based on the recommended alternative that was selected back in 2004. And then it's, in CSO 06, which is Kings Beach, and 6A is another regulator that's further upstream, a little complicated to discuss, but the level of control was intended to be once in five years. So you would not get a discharge out of Kings Beach, but once in five, five years, excuse me. And what the far-right column represents is that, based on the updated model and the current conditions happening in the collection system now, the intended alternative back in 2004 really would only achieve an outfall, outfall 03, a one-year level control. So it went from 10 down to one. So once every, once a year, you would get a discharge versus once every 10 years. At 4 and 5, it really didn't achieve the level of control. And a lot of this was based on the fact that the model that we have now is much more detailed, a little bit more advanced. So what was considered back in 2004 to be a good plan, we found out based on current conditions and a more dynamic model, that it just wasn't going to achieve what it set out to do. And then you can see at outfall 6, instead of a five-year level of control, all that it would achieve is six months. Twice a year, you would get a discharge from outfall 6. So under the update that we did for this current supplemental facility and plant update, we looked at a number of additional alternatives. So we picked it up, that alternative 4, and looked at all these different options. The top option really looked at trying to incorporate green infrastructure. Some of you might hear, that's a common term these days, it's really, what it intends to do is take stormwater and actually put as much of it as you can into the ground so that it infiltrates, doesn't even get into the system, or doesn't get into receiving it. The grouping of alternatives from 5A to 5D, we evaluated various levels of sewer separation. Now sewer separation takes those old combined pipes that are all in one, stormwater and wastewater in one pipe, and it usually achieves separating the system by building new drains and separating that stormwater out of the wastewater system. You can imagine, if you're having a combined system, and on a normal dry weather day, you've got a certain amount of flow in the system, take a rainfall event, like those that have occurred in the last month or so, and all that runoff trying to get into the same pipes, it's obvious that trying to get that stormwater out of the wastewater system will have a long-term benefit. So that's when alternatives 4A through 5, I'm sorry, 5A through 5D were considered, was looking at various areas in the city where sewer separation could be achieved in order to minimize the CSO discharge. And then alternatives 6A and 6B really looked at one of the alternatives that was included in the 2004 plan, a large storage tunnel. And we looked at a couple of different alternatives for trying to achieve that same storage, probably with a deep rock tunnel. Instead of a box tunnel along the lin, obviously, trying to put a big long tunnel in the linway would be very disruptive, so we looked at other tunnel alternatives for the purposes of evaluating those, those alternatives. So this is a matrix, basically a table that shows the various outfall locations and what the levels of control that were achieved by each of the various alternatives. So if you look at the first column on the left, that was the 2004 alternative 2A selection. It intended to achieve a 10, 10-year, three-month, and five-year respectively in each of the outfalls, based on current conditions, it would only achieve a one-year, no control at a six-month level of control at outfall 6. And the new alternatives that we evaluated, 4 through 6B, shows respectively the different levels of control that would be achieved by those alternatives. You'll notice that column B, a little bit of foreshadow, column 5C is highlighted. That ultimately ended up to be the recommended plan that we put forward to the Commission. But you can see 5B and 5C are fairly close in terms of level of control. 5D tried to take advantage of a significant amount of green infrastructure to achieve the ultimate objective. And in overview, that, familiar with green infrastructure, you know that it's not always easy to build, usually you have to take land, you have to install a lot of those facilities in parkland and other public facilities, which isn't necessarily a bad idea. But our recommendation was to pretty much stay in the streets, try to do as much as you could through separation, and 5C is what we ultimately recommended to the Commission. So this is a summary of the CSO events that we modeled after 5C was chosen. You can see that the first column in the grayish table indicates before CSO controls were in place, and that dates back to an early facilities plan that was done by another engineering firm that was updated in the 2004 plan. So prior to the Commission undertaking activities, construction, new pipe if you will, to reduce CSOs, a number of activations were fairly significant. The updated baseline, based on today's conditions and all the work that's been done in the city up to this point, is represented in the middle column. So for example, CSO 03 had 44 overflows prior to a lot of the work initiated by the Commission. Since the work has been done, and we're sitting here today, there's 16 in here and there. And then based on our alternative 5C, in a typical annual rainfall array of storm events, alternative 5C would produce zero discharges again in a typical year. Now, when I say typical year, again, it's important to understand that storm events that we had was recently, the one just a week or so ago, and the one in October, are not typical year rainfall events. So those events are more intense, produce more rainfall, so they become more of a challenge. You have to take those into consideration when you design your sewer separation. Again, alternative 5C makes a significant reduction in the number of CSO overflows in a typical year. In terms of the cost, we compared a few of the alternatives. I mentioned 5B, this is the one that involves a significant amount of green infrastructure. Alternative 2A back in 2004 was estimated to be somewhere in the range of $40 to $50 million to complete to the Commission. Bringing that 2004 cost to current, it actually represents a cost of $80 million in today's models. Alternative 5C, which is the one that was recommended, is estimated to cost $106 million. And I'll show you what the components of that cost are in just a second. Once we looked at the cost, and we compared that to the level of CSO capture or reduction that we get as a result of the recommended plan, and actually all of the alternatives, we did what was considered to be a cost-benefit, a bang for your buck if you will, in terms of amount of money invested to a level of CSO control. And although it's difficult to read from where you are, 5C is very, in each of the comparisons. On the long bottom are different representative rainfall years or storms if you will. So 5C was also supported by the fact that it's a cost-effective approach in alternative. So the estimated capital cost of 5C minimum was $106 million. On the last chart, round it up or round it down, I guess, if this chart shows, 106.5. It's comprised of five pieces, to provide sewer separation in the Bennett Shepherd Street area, and it includes, in order to achieve that separation, there's a new storm rain outfall that you need to do there. So the new storm rain outfall and separation of combined sewers in the Bennett Shepherd Street area, as well as the downtown 05 area, $49.3 million for the Shepherd Bennett Street area, $42.7 million for the downtown area, $180 million dollars to separate out combined sewers that still exist today. There's some other adjustments that need to be made in the system. The overflow pipe in 03 is really a wear, it's a big long brick wall that needs to be adjusted in order to reduce the amount of discharge that goes through that pipe. Private overflow removal is where people go into the houses and try to disconnect downspouts that may be directly connected into the old combined sewers. So once those combined sewers become strictly a sanitary pipe, you don't want all that roof runoff and drains and the driveways getting into that system. The whole idea is trying to get as much of that out as possible. So taking the private overflow, there's a level of effort estimated to be somewhere in the range of $6.5 million to do, to do that. And by investing the money in removing private overflow, it reduces the amount of pipe that you actually have to put into the ground. To upgrade and modernize the connection between two of the major interceptors in the city, there's a smooth state proposed at the wastewater treatment plant, of work to do that so flow can be controlled into the treatment plant to make sure that it's not overflowing, is in the range of $4.5 million. And then to achieve a lot of the separation in the 05 and the Bennett Shepherd area, we have to reconstruct the Blossom and Commercial Street storm drains, get them out of the combined sewer. Right now, there's some separated storm drains in those areas, but they connect to the combined sewer there. And they're also at a height below ground that needs to be lowered so that the new drains from these other neighbors can actually tide in by gravity and then be discharged to the harbor. So total program cost, for instance, $2.5 million. This is a graph that, again, is very difficult to see from where you're sitting, but it essentially shows the geographic expanse of the various projects, contract areas if you will, that will be undertaken over the course of, we evaluated a 10-year, 12-year implementation timeframe. So perhaps after the presentation, I think we'll just back up and people who might take the photos will look at it. But this just really lays out where the major contract areas would be in the west Lin part of the city. The one closest to the harbor, obviously, is the new outfall pipe that would take to get the separated stormwater out of the system into the harbor. So implementation schedule, as I mentioned, we looked at two, two-time periods, 10-year and 20-year. And frankly, the reason for looking at these schedules is really to determine what we can work through in terms of affordability to try to spread that $106.5 million out. And at the same time, we're going to have to get some direction from EPA, DP as to what's reasonable from their perspective. So this really just shows the components of the project, their associated costs, and when during those time periods they would be implemented, based on the current condition. A lot of this is subject to change based on, once the Commission moves into a design stage for these projects, obviously, they'll have to engage folks in areas, understand what the potential impacts could be to traffic, to businesses, to home owners. So all that will be taken into consideration at a much greater level of detail in the So all of this was then boiled down to, is this, and how can this be affordable? So financial analysis was done based on the recommended plan, based on the recommended plan cost, and also based on the implementation schedules that were evaluated overall. So some key findings, really, just some bullet points about the financial analysis itself. There was a baseline condition looked at between now and 20 years ago, 2035, so it was really 2015 to 2035. And the baseline included no CSO program. So all the Commissions anticipated expenditures and increases in costs and O&amp;M contracts that they had in the wastewater and water treatment plant, and some other modifications that need to be made to update some of the equipment for wastewater treatment. So their normal operating expenses plus their capital program plus some other major items projected from now to 2035. In addition to that, we looked at 10-year implementation of the program, and the funding source for that would be either bonds or SRF borrowing from state-level. And you'll see that the rate of interest really is what drives some of the differences between affordability of the two different alternatives. So that was evaluated both 10 and 20 years. So it was a 10-year bond financing, 10-year SRF financing, 20-year bond financing, 10-year SRF financing. Second bullet, the financial analysis included some cost escalation associated with the O&amp;M contracts and the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant. We looked at the capital costs for the project itself, all of the work that needed to be done. This bullet 3 is just saying that it was evaluated using both bonds and SRF. Fourth bullet, Commission every year, three years, projects what they need in capital expenditures. So the third bullet, fourth bullet, is basically just saying if we use their CIQ program, and then once that was complete, it was assumed that the CIQ requirement would be essentially $1 million a year from there on. And the financial analysis took into account the increased cost in funding, so... And the financial analysis took into account the increased cost in funding, so what the interest rates are, looked at when certain bonds would be retired. A lot of it is based on a model, as you can imagine, there's a lot of different assumptions and a lot of different methods that need to be put into that financial model. The last bullet really just deals with some asset updates, basically we can't have the equipment that just don't need to be updated. For those of you that may know or don't know, the commission has a long-term operation and maintenance contract at the wastewater treatment plant, that expires in 2021. It's anticipated that the commission will go out RFP to hire a new operator there, but it's anticipated that those costs at that time will probably see an appreciation of, go up a cost of 30%. And that's what is being carried right now in the analysis. So findings from the analysis, it was very conservative, kind of a worst-case scenario. We started the program in 2017, so first couple of years, really working, negotiating with EPA and DP, doing some preliminary design work. So the program really starts in earnest in 2017, assuming that SRF loan funding, that by using SRF, it can significantly reduce the rate impact. I'll just read some of these assumptions as you can read them. With the SRF funding, the impact from the project could be in the 10% to 21% range. Without the SRF funding, those percentage increases would be higher, for example, if we had to, which could have gone from bond market. Typically, at least based on today's rates, they're close to double what you can achieve on the SRF 4, 4 interest rates. The revenue bond funding, it's higher than the SRF funding, and you can see that the impacts are expected to be under 2% of mean household income. It's rather confusing the way that the EPA wants these financial analyses done, and they reference everything to the mean household income, which basically when graphed out, determines whether a project is affordable or not affordable. They use that 2% threshold, in their mind, is determining whether something's affordable or not. And the program, we had it graphed in a previous version of the presentation, the graph of the cost over time falls just under that 2% median household income. So from EPA's eyes, it's never going to be affordable, but that's probably not surprising to a lot of people. The actual rate impacts will be determined by actual implementation schedule, discussions with the regulators as to how fast or how slow we can deal with the project, but really that's what is intended to say, that it's our best estimate right now of what these impacts are, but only time will tell for certain what those true impacts are. We think the range is probably relevant and appropriate, but depending upon how things happen year-to-year with the commission, what other capital costs that they may have to incur over time, we could just look into the crystal ball as we knew it now, and that's what's reflected in the analysis. So the summary of the impacts of the typical user bills, take a minute to just digest this table. And along the top, the columns represent the no LTCP is really no CSO project. So it's what the commission's expenses and finances are projected over a 20-year period with no project. The next column is the plan implemented over 10 years using bonds to fund the debt. The third column to the right is 10 years of plan implementation using SRF program. So you'll see the difference between the bond financing and the SRF financing is, I wouldn't say dramatic, but certainly less expensive to take advantage of the SRF over into the state. The next two columns represent a 20-year implementation, so building the project over 20 years, and then using the two different types of funding, bond versus SRF. In the lines represented by the headings on the left column, the top line is the current typical user bill, and these are based on many different averages. So you can see where you fit into the current typical user bill, but they range all over the place based on the volume of water that you use, based on how much, how often you use it, and so on and so forth. So looking at all the bills across the city, the typical user bill, currently with no plan is $751, that's even across the board. So when this analysis was done, that's what the typical bill looked like. The bill in fiscal year 2035 starts under the no plan and the no LTCP at about $110 dollars, and you can see it goes up incrementally based on what the requirements are for each of the different years of implementation. So if you look at the bill in 2035, under the 10-year plan, using bond financing would be $137.69, and so on. That is, that's great. So the difference, just really just subtracting what is in 2035 from, sorry, what is now from what it would be in 2035, is shown in that third row. So you can see that all the way across from $30.02 with no plan to $44.93 with the 20-year The difference there again, from no CSO plan to implementing the plan under that series of implementation schedules, 10-year bonds, 10-year SRF, is in the next row. So it's $27.16 difference between the annual monthly bill and the average monthly bill with no long-term plan, and then with the 10-year implementation using bonds. So we go all the way down to the bottom, I won't read every single one of those, you look at the, this line, the annual average bill, so the annual average bill with no plan would be in the range of $1,166.05. You follow that across with a 10-year implementation, that goes from $1,166 up to $1,372, $1,373. If you use SRF funding and you build a project over 10 years, you're at $1,266.39 and so on. So the difference with and without the plan is represented in this last row, and it's represented as, for the average bill, on a monthly basis now, oh, I'm sorry, it's annual. So the average annual minus without the plan, subtracted from the average annual, based on the different implementation periods of building the plan, is showing that last row. I'll be happy to go back to any of these during the questions or discussion.
Thank you, Tony. I just want to recognize another commissioners in attendance, Commissioner Dave Ellis, and we also have our counselor from Ward 6, Rick Ford. Ward 7, I'm thinking of Peter, he was on my mind. Okay, we'll open it up now for any questions or comments. If you would, come up to the podium and sign in and fire away.
I'm not too close, am I?
You can't get too close.
My name is Michelle Wilkins, I live at Lloydland Level Street. I wasn't quite sure when this meeting was all, was being presented, but right now, does the commission have any immediate plans on helping out with the flooding on the Commercial Street Lineway area, and what are those plans and what are you working on?